Session for the Montgomery City Council, February eighteen, twenty twenty five.
Yes, sir. He has to give it in the regular meeting as I have spread it for minutes.
Okay.
Item three, review of over grand violation issue that Montgomery Fire Department to level two, Club fifteen, West South Boulevard.
All right. We'll discuss that in the regular meeting. I think the fire department and the ordinance are here.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Riley, you got any comments on that?
No, we're doing what we can.
What the council will need to do is uphold the findings of the fire department and authorize the administrative figure.
Okay. All right.
Item four, ordinance considering to disposal of certain property that waterworks and sanitary sewer abandoned well site thirty two.
All right.
Item five, ordinance vacating portion of a remnant unproved right of way of either the north right of way of West Fifth Street and south right of way of West Fourth Street, east of Forsen.
Okay. Hey, who's representing that property? Not everybody at one time. Item number five?
Mr. Mr. Dunson's coming up to speak.
Okay.
Apologize, are we on the?
Five.
Okay. I believe this may be for some buildings being built by ASU on ASU's campus, if I'm not mistaken.
That's what it looks like.
Some housing. They're trying to vacate a portion of the right of way so they can have enough room to build student housing over in that area.
Okay. All right, we good. All right, thank you, Patrick.
Item six, ordinance amending section sixteen dash one oh seven to give special licenses and provisions gasoline and oil tax wholesale.
Okay, I think Patrick discussed that with us a couple of weeks ago. Any council member have anything that they want to bring, talk, listen about at this time in the work session before this comes before the regular council?
Mr. President, just wanted to confirm the usage of the increase just one more time, just to make sure that we had it understood, what the increase was being allocated towards.
I think it was allocated for paving.
Dedicated to just the actual paving part, though?
Go ahead, Mr. Dunson.
The gas tax proposal basically was a three cents increase for gas tax. It can be used for paving. There's a lot of uses that it can be used for. So I guess if you want to specifically have something that directly said it could only be used for that, you might have to have an adjustment to the ordinance.
Well, that would be my question is that if we're doing the, is the allocation for just paving or is the allocation for paving and other services or?
Paving certainly would be my recommendation. We need, we need to do a lot of paving here. We're getting behind on our paving. But that monies, it is allowable to use, like for instance, you can pay for the electricity bill on streetlights. That's, you know, we currently have a gas tax in place. And so some of the uses that it is used today for, it's used for the pay the power bills on the twenty-six thousand streetlights we have. It pay, it goes to that. It also goes to pay partial salaries for street maintenance workers. Obviously, those workers are actually out there paving and doing the work for the city every day. So those are some of the uses it's currently being used for, but it can be used for a host. It just depends on how the finance department programs that money during the budget period.
Mr. President, I, I think one of the things that is important, I know we've talked about Patrick, about, you know, how the funding and resources we need. I've seen firsthand the cost of paving and how many times we are getting phone calls about that. I think it would be important for the council to consider as a part of this, really kind of putting some kind of allocation that directly directs where this money is going. My recommendation would be doing that directly for paving projects, because as Patrick has alluded, you know, we have that money that, you know, just doing the increase doesn't guarantee that it's just going to improve our improved streets in our city. So if that's something that the council would consider, I think that's something we should work on over the next.
Thing all we need to do is make an amendment on what we want to allocate.
So, so I'd ask that we not make an amendment because it's already there. The gas tax can only be used for maintenance of roads. And there's a definition there. When we talk about maintenance of those streetlights that are along roads, make sure those roads are lighted. Paving, infrastructure sidewalks, curbs, bridges that may have failed, that we need to pay for, hint, hint, because we have one right now. If we narrow it down to just paving, then that narrows what we can do with those dollars when it comes to road maintenance and street maintenance in the city of Montgomery. So I'd ask that we not make it down any further because it's already there. These dollars can only be used for the maintenance of roads and streets in our city. Now, and adjacent infrastructure that goes along with that. So if we nail it down to just paving, that's all you're going to get. So when you have, when you need to, to fix a bridge, for instance, that is after we've done an inspection that is unsafe, that we've had to close down, we now can't use those dollars. We got to go somewhere else to do that, to that also.
Just out of curiosity, right now with the gas tax, what percentage of the gas tax is going towards paving versus other parts of, whether it be infrastructure, lights, that kind of stuff? Any idea?
I, I think each, each year that depends on how the finance director programs the money. So, I mean, that, that can be worked out in the budget process.
Right. And moreover, you all approve the budget. So that is something that you can approve and review during the budget process as we go through.
Mr. President, I have another question. I hate to raise taxes, but in review of things that have happened over years, we have a two and a half percent lodging tax. It was put in force in oh three, oh four to build the Riverwalk Stadium. That's been paid off for quite a few years. That tax is still in force. It creates about three and a half million dollars a year in revenue. I thought that gets you a bit. And that's something we need to look at at the same time because it's revenue that I know has been used for other things, but it is a revenue stream that's changed.
The debt would not be paid off until thirty years after that time. The debt was restructured, refunded, but we're still having to pay that debt until that thirty year time period is up. So if that was in oh three, oh four, you're looking at the year twenty thirty-four, and we still have to use those funds to cover the debt service. Even though it's not seeing riverfront, it's not the original debt. We just went back and refinanced.
We're using it for debt service?
Yes, sir. We certainly are.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Beale. Thank you. Mr. Jim Wright, any other questions? All right, thank you. Next item?
Item seven, resolution declaring a six month moratorium on the construction of new billboard structures and the alteration of existing billboard structures.
All right. Any questions on item seven?
Uh, yeah, Mr. President, Mr. Reed, I assume this is just, this, I assume this isn't going to cause an issue, but alteration of existing structures doesn't include changing the content of static billboards.
No.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you. All right.
Item eight, resolution approving and authorizing mayor to execute an agreement with L. Dodd. And you can see the list of streets that they are, but it's for Percy G. and Haskell right away intersection.
All right. Any questions on item eight?
Item nine, resolution authorizing mayor to execute an amendment to help enterprises agreement.
All right.
Item ten, application for restaurant retail local license at sixty-one thirty-two Atlanta Highway.
All right, we will have a public hearing on that in the regular meeting. Mr. Jim Wright, you have any issues?
I'm okay with it.
All right.
Item eleven, application for restaurant retail local license at eighteen sixty-three Mount Men's Road.
There will be a public hearing in the regular meeting.
Item twelve, application for restaurant retail local license doing business is Hot San Karaoke twenty-seven eighty-seven Hill Road.
All right, Mr. Jim Wright, there will be a public hearing in the regular meeting. You have any?
I'm good.
All right.
Thirteen, resolution approving a business license for a toy company doing business is Pro Say Roadside LLC eighteen thirty-three Gibson Court.
All right. And that's, that's regular business. Next item?
Fourteen, resolution appointing mining wells to the industrial development board.
All right, Ms. Beard?
I'm good with that.
I'm not.
Item fifteen has been with prom and council. There has a resolution to replace this one.
Okay.
And item sixteen is the demolitions. It's listed there, proposed demolitions. And seventeen are the nuisances.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir.
Any council have anything before we get into our public communication?
Mr. President.
Mr. Mitch?
Wanted to talk about the clubhouse. We had several issues with the way that they wrote that, that new event center ordinance. That if you're over fifteen hundred square feet, that you do not have to come in front of the, the city council. And I feel that, that that's beginning to be an issue because most of those storefronts are going to be bigger than that, that actually space. Like I said, we had an incident, I think, this weekend with the clubhouse. And what they end up doing, they came in front of the council, one individual, and was denied. And so what they did, they got another individual to move two doors down from the original spot. And they did not have to come in front of the city council and they're doing the exact same activity if they was doing before they came in front of us. And so my, my, my issue, and I, and I want, I'm glad that the fire department is in here. When we have a business that does not have a, a business license or do have a business license, how often do the fire department or when do the fire department go, go out to? Because I know they, they're over their whatever limit they, they, their capacity is. I know it's over and we're having so many incidents. I just think that we need to change that whole outlook because they do, do need to come in front of us because more people are getting these storefront with more than fifteen hundred square feet. And they're operating outside the scope of, of the city council because first of all, we need to know what's coming into our district. And if we do not know, we can't be prepared to take whatever action that needs to be taken. And the, the second thing I think we need to look at, I know we, we did away with it, the BYB. I think we need to reconsider looking at that as well. I know we did it due to riverfront and having things at the amphitheater, but I think that park or wrecks or, or can do, if it's an event, they could do a special license for that particular day to allow alcohol in. But I think we just need to read, look at some of the ordinance that we have and definitely need to look at them not coming in front of the city council if their building is over fifteen hundred square feet.
All right. Just need to make the amendment. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mitch. Anyone else?
Mr. President.
Ms. Beard?
Um, yeah, can we just get an update on the business license and where we are with those? Are we, are we going to be able to honor that twenty-first? I've just had a lot of phone calls. That no, that they're, I know y'all are calling as much as you can. I get it.
We are. We're saving a lot of phone calls and returning calls as fast as we can with what we got and processing licenses as fast as we can too.
Right. I understand that. So if they don't get a call by the twenty-first, they're still good? Is that correct?
Right.
Just be patient.
Twenty-first is the deadline.
Yes, sir. But they may get a call after that.
If they call and they can go on ahead and get it into us, you know, we'll be okay. Unless y'all want to extend it out further, like another week.
I guess what I'm asking is, I've had people that say they, they know that the deadline is the twenty-first.
Correct.
And they've not heard from anybody. So what I'm asking is, are we going to get to everybody by the twenty-first? Are we going to get to everybody by the twenty-first of the phone call?
We're going to do the best we can.
Okay. And if not, we'll give them a grace period. Is that correct?
Yeah, we will consider a grace period.
Now, the ordinance says the twenty-first, so it's the twenty-first unless y'all change it.
Twenty-first.
If they get something to us, even if it's not paid all the way, if they pay it like last year's, they're good. They're on time.
I think they're waiting to hear. This one particular person is waiting to hear how much they owe.
Well, if they send that application in, fourteen dollars is nothing at all. As long as we receive the application, they have tried to do it, then they won't be late.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Uh, Mrs. William Boyd, the toy companies in the public communication work session, Ross.
Good afternoon.
Hey, good afternoon.
First, I want to say I came down about a month ago and spoke before the council about the toy company that I did with Seaman. So first I asked, were we able to, to look into it? I'm just doing a follow-up on my complaint for my last visit, make sure that my complaint didn't go swept underneath the rug because it is a problem. And I got a letter from Seaman Friday on a two thousand and fourteen Nissan Sentra that they picked up December the third of twenty twenty-four. I received a letter Friday saying that the vehicle is up for auction, uh, auction, and they wanted seventeen hundred dollars to pick my vehicle up. All because they used their truck to go tow a vehicle and took it back to their, to their breathing ground. They have a post out there on City Watch, Uncut Montgomery. They got thousands of views of people that, that fear what I fear. But these people have been misused. They, they are poor people and they are low income people in this, this city of Montgomery is allowing this toy company to go out and, and turn a sixty-five dollar tow into a fifteen or a three thousand dollar fee. Where these people are not able to get their car. And I think Councilman Mitch stated at the last city council meeting that he have the solution, but the city won't entertain his solution. So if a citizen come down, I take time to come down and, and I see a concern, I see a complaint, I have a complaint, there's something that, that is not affecting not only me, but it's affecting a lot of people, black and white. Whereas Seaman Toy Company, they tow a car for fifty to sixty-five dollars a tow, and then they notify the owner two or three months down the road. After they ran these fees up to fifteen to three thousand dollars, they taking these people cars. So I would like to know what, what could we do to try to stop this? It's been run there, Mitch, so he raised the questions already and why we would not entertain on what he brought to the council.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Boyd?
I would like to hear from my city. I have a spokesperson up there. I would like to hear from my city. You know, y'all taking all these clubs and y'all, y'all really hammering down on these bids where I have a bid that's standing. They're taking cars. They're taking, they're taking the car from poor people. But y'all won't entertain that. I want to know why. But we sit there and we make all the other club owner come before the council and answer to y'all. But we, I have a legitimate complaint that is burning up on social media about other people that experience the same thing that I have experienced. So people called to me and they called me and asked me, what could we do? Well, I bring it to the council. So would the council be able to, to entertain? It would be just me coming down and just saying what I need to say and walk out of the building, let, let it take place.
Mr. President?
Mr. Mitch?
I'd like to ask two things. That we put the impound back into committee, government affairs that, that would go into government affairs, Ms. Blaylock, would that fit into the committee that I, I chair?
Did that not sign and die with the previous council? I need to double check that.
It did. I think we just need to bring it back up. Then we'll sign it to a committee on the next meeting. Just get the ordinance, re-introduce it, and then we'll sign it to a committee to work for a solution.
Ye- yes, sir, Mr. President. And I see those same reviews, and I definitely would like to have Seaman in here for a, a review, Mr. President.
All right. And let me just be clear, and I heard, Mr. Boyd, I want to make this clear for everybody saying that the towing is not, it, it's, it's the storage fees that, that's being held. If your car has been held two, three months and they're charging you a storage fee, and I think even if we did a city towing lot, the city is not going to just allow the car to sit there for free. There's going to be a fee that that car sits there. So let me finish. It's still up to the owner. You know, I just, it's hard for me to believe that someone would hold a car for two and a half months and take it home. If that's happening, then that should be some legal action that we need to take from a standpoint. If you're holding a car and not notifying the owner. But for the owner's standpoint, if your car is missing, you should be trying to search to find out where your car is, you know, it either stolen, haven't been reported, stolen, to try to find out whether it hasn't been reported. So those are the things I think we have to work hand in hand, owner and the towing lot where they're holding those cars. Because if you got a car for two thousand, I understand if you only paid two thousand dollars for it, you got to pay seventeen hundred dollars to get it out. Is it worth it?
But President, President Calhoun, I think you, you jumped to conclusion without, without having all the facts.
I just, I just went on what, based on what you said.
They towed my car December the third. Now, I have a letter posted that, but, but they notified me last, last Friday. So why, why, why it take so long? Why did it take so long for them to notify the owner? Evidently, they, I had the same system that they have. Why they didn't notify me when they first impound the vehicle? The vehicle was in an accident. I'm just saying. So I'm going to tell you, you got to speak with facts. I'm not, they towed the vehicle December the third.
Okay.
So why notify me last week telling me that I have so many days I'll pay seventeen hundred to get my vehicle back? Why you, why you couldn't notify me when, when you first towed the car, like within the first forty, within the first seven, two hours? Why wait so long?
I think that could be an issue. If they're not notifying you for two, three months, that could be an issue.
So what, I'm just saying, I don't know what their contract.
Well, okay, I tell you what we do. You say it's Seaman?
It's Seaman, yes.
We, we can ask them to come before the council and talk to us about their, their process on when they tow a car and when they notify owner. That's where we can get both sides of the story. And if it's something that's in prerogative, then we'll address it.
Okay, so what about these people that sits in jail for thirty days? They, they, they.
Now, now you want to know something.
But, 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 no, 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 but it's the same thing. These are fees that these people can't get.
Your time is up. I'm asking you a question. You're talking about towing. Now you're talking about people in jail. It has nothing to do with towing.
Yes, it does, brother. They get towed because they have revoked license. They get, they go to jail. They do forty-five days. They come out, they don't have a car.
You should be driving with a boat license.
But people do. This, this, this world is not perfect, T C.
That's the chance that you take. If you driving with revoked license, that you get stopped, your car get towed.
So you think, my, my, my marketing order not fifteen hundred dollars a month. You, you think that's fair? They charged me forty-five days, seventeen hundred dollars.
If you have a, back to your question, if you have a revoked license, you shouldn't be driving.
Well.
So you take that risk that if you get caught, they tow your car.
They tow cars off my lot illegally, and I had to pay to get them back because I'm in a, I'm in a civil issue. The same Seaman, the same, I mean, they, they towed my car.
Solution is we'll bring Seaman down and we'll talk to him about what their process is, and then we'll address it from there. Thank you for your time. All right, Mr. Quincy Leonard, Leo Foundation Legacy Movement.
Good, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Uh, I think I have a video. Uh, and I want to thank, I want to thank you all last year for, for the, for the city council really supporting this event. You all helped make it successful, and we're getting prepared right now for it. And so what I want to do is, you know, this was about, was our staple events for the Leo Foundation. To help raise money for initiatives that we do around the city. And that's what I want to kind of talk about today. Legacy Golf Championship is a collegiate and junior event for players from across the country as well as across the world to see what Montgomery has to offer. So we got the collegiate players, both men and women, junior fifteen to eighteen boys, junior thirteen to fourteen boys, and the girls thirteen to eighteen individuals. I had over seventy players to actually sign up. It's for everybody. On Monday after first round, we had a performance workshop, and man, those kids had a blast just learning. Track man was out, and the kids just want to see how far they can hit that ball. And they can hit it, man. My favorite thing for this Legacy Golf Championship has been just the families and the players just coming together and just enjoying one another. And really getting an understanding and learning about our city, Montgomery, and then just testing their skills and learning on the golf course. And it doesn't matter if you win or lose, you play good or bad. It's the way you carry yourself. Your legacy is how you act, how you treat people. They're not going to ruin your sport. They're going to ruin you.
Welcome back. New this morning, a chance for middle school students to learn and play golf. They're on a team at their school.
Montgomery, Alabama.
Move Montgomery Forward Golf Initiative is offering new opportunities for students to learn and compete.
Today might not be the best day to play golf, but W S M A, I'll do support Bethany Davis. He's a big part of being in sport anyways this morning, Bethany. The goal here, though, is to get more young people involved in playing golf.
That's exactly the move Montgomery Forward Golf Initiative's mission is to really expose the sport to students who may not otherwise have a chance to experience it. Quincy Leonard is the founder of the Leo Foundation, also the movement for the Forward Golf Initiative, whether it's not cooperating with us this morning. But you're hosting a number of developmental days to teach students who may not otherwise have a chance to learn golf a little bit about the game. And you've gotten some of those students here with you this morning. Thank y'all for getting up early this morning. What are some of the skills that we could learn on this development place?
Yeah, well, we've, we've already done a couple of them already to kind of kickstart the season, you know, for this league. And so we'll start with on the seventeenth, this month, it's coming up Monday, and then March the second and the ninth on, on Sunday at three thirty. And so there are those developmental days. We're just giving those kids that may need that exposure, experience to come out and learn some fundamentals. How, you know, rules, etiquette, those basic fundamentals. Now, we may have some experienced players, I do know we do. They'll, you know, they help us out during those kind of camps, but they'll be able to go out and putt, on the range, and learn some, and some trickery as well. So then we'll get them on the golf course and work on those skills out there as well.
These students here this morning can show us a little bit of like what we can learn.
Brady, what, what school do you have, Brady?
At Maxwell, okay.
And then we have Noah Corbin, and he goes to.
Okay.
And then Audrey Harris.
All right.
So each player is going to demonstrate something. I want that Brady just do a full swing. Y'all step, step back. So we're going to go full swing stuff, just developing good fundamentals. He has a very good setup. He's a very good little player. And so his dad is excited when he said, we're going to do this. So everyone in the league. And then we got Noah Corbin. He can demonstrate like a chin shot, if you don't mind, a small swing. And then we got, you know, those, that's another skill. And then we can have Audrey can demonstrate a putter stroke setup. And then, wow, that's an incident. Make that nice putter stroke. All right, good. And so those are just some of the fundamentals that we, we have developed the kids on. This is what our tournament did. It was, it enabled us to do these initiatives. And so last year, we did the eight-week STEM program. That was our first time doing this initiative. I did it with Golf My Future, Golf My Game out of Washington, D.C. And they were able to partner with us and give us a lot of the resources that we needed to do the program. And so we're doing the eight-week program again, but we're also adding that league aspect where we got the different school systems in the sys, in the city. We have several schools that are going to participate in this league to let their middle schools play golf. And that will help move those kids from middle. uh, kids from middle school into, uh, high school golf, I think that's the best way to build your programs up, I've done it in the past, and, uh, at the school I coach at, and so I just wanted to do this for this, you know, for some of our kids in the city, and I think it's going to be a great, great initiative.
Anyone have any questions, Mr. Leonard?
You still set up as an, as a five oh one, Ms. Brenda?
Yes, sir, he is.
I'll give you, I'm going to give you two thousand, because I didn't get you last year a thousand, so I'm going to give you two thousand tonight, just as long as you promise not to let Mr. Calhoun around none of the kids, because he's a horrible golf player, and he teaches.
Better than two thousand.
He played, listen, I need all my city councilmen to play it, not, uh.
You don't need him to play.
Play it, uh, you know.
No, but I want to help you, because I did last year, but I think it's a good thing y'all do.
Uh, thank you, I appreciate you, appreciate your help.
Thank you, anyone else, thank you, we will support you on what you, appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Alright, any council have anything?
Mr. President? So, you know, I'm, I'm part of one of the greatest fraternities in the world, and we had, uh, fraternity meeting on Sunday, and we have a building nine, ten, um, South Court Street, and my fraternity want to help the city by making it a warming station, um, I want to get with whoever we need to get with, so we can see, um, do we qualify to help the city, um, for as a, a warming center, uh, we have bought, we are starting to buy the cars, we have re, um, revamped the whole, um, building, um, so whoever I need to get with, Mr. President, can you make sure that the greatest fraternity in the world?
The greatest fraternity.
That does the most service in the whole entire city, gets, uh, what we need to make sure that we can qualify to be a warming station for the city of Montgomery.
I will work with you on that, with the greatest fraternity in the world, thank you, my brother, alright, anyone else?